...business that we have this evening. Mr. Messenger, if I could ask you to pull that seat back. I only say that and sort of face the crowd a little bit and the board simultaneously. I'd like that to be fine, just because you know you will be on TV, not tonight, because we will hold all of this, you know, interview process off the public scene so that other people following your interview don't see all the questions or whatever. And so you will not be on tonight, but later on in the week, I'm sure they will be posting and having this as part of the, shall we say, TV opportunities for the public, okay? Just to let you know that. Jason, welcome. I don't know if people know you, but you probably don't know all of us. So, John, if you would introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm John Dixon, Vice Chair.
Maureen Marshall, Chair.
Tina Dixon, the Executive Director of Central Mass EMS and firefighter of the town of Haverston, neighboring town for a couple decades now.
Mark Vigenus, Clerk.
Obviously, no Chiefs of War, I would assume.
Sorry, Chief of War.
Okay, so, let's just start off with the questions. John, if you want to go number one.
Sure. First, thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks, ma'am.
What have you done to prepare for the position of Fire Chief in the town of Barry? And what differentiates you from other candidates?
Well, I just recently retired from my full-time job as a captain, so I proceeded to go up through the ranks to get the department in obtaining pretty much all the requirements for this job, excluding a couple that I don't have or everything else. So, with that being said, you know, I know a lot of people below me as far as candidate-wise, being interviewed later, is that some of them do not have a lot of the same ones that I do. Although three out of the four are town employees or town firefighters already, so we all have a pretty good knowledge of who's who, like, in the room as far as, you know, positions, as far as the townspeople, the area. So, that gives us the benefit for that as well, that we continue to work here, you know, ongoing through this process. So, I think that helps me as a candidate. Thank you.
We'll be right along. What challenges do you see facing the Barry Fire Department and the town in the upcoming year?
I don't think we have enough time to...
Well, do your best.
Really, the big thing is the town's in a critical, whether they know it or not, we're in a critical state as far as staffing. Staffing's huge in the area, all around. I think Ms. Dixon can affirm over there, you know, the town of Haverston, as well as some of the area towns, that we're all in the same boat. The retention, the recruitability, is just not there either way. And it's unfortunate, and it's just, the generation is changing. The desire to serve is not there as much anymore. So, definitely, it's going to be staffing, facility-wise. We have to do something with the facilities because it's only getting worse. I mean, they've been in that building over thirty years, almost. You know, it's, like you said the day you came down and talked to us, it's deplorable, which it is.
I probably should say that.
You did. Yep. And unfortunately, it is, and I can't understand why anybody would want to come there and work when they see it, when they walk in. You know, you need something to draw people to the organization, whether it be the leadership, whether it be the facility, whether it be the pay, whether it be the equipment. Unfortunately, we had the leadership. Now, he's gone. So, we're starting to get the equipment, which is good. So, we're on that path, at least, with that. But the station, you know, and the money, unfortunately, I get it. Everybody's in a tight budget crunch throughout the area. Unfortunately, it's something that we've got to work through and come up with a plan somehow together. It can't be just you. It can't just be me. It can't just be, you know, whoever. It has to be everybody to have, like, a five, like, a three, a five, and a ten-year plan. And we've got to kind of stick to that path to try to get what we need through those, that time period. And right now, there is no plan. We're just kind of keeping our head above water barely, and you can only do that for so long. Case in point, a couple weeks ago, there's basically four, maybe five per diems, and then we've got the five full-timers. I think we're down to four now because the chief left and Dave left. There was, you know, Rutland came over and covered the town for the day. I was out of town. A couple of the other per diems were out of town. There was no one in town to cover anything. So, unfortunately, we had to bring out the town and to cover our own town. That's unheard of, you know, and it's really unfortunate, you know. You know, we're dealing with the ambulance issues, unfortunately, but that, too, that is hurting us as well, as far as staffing, because we really don't need as much staff if you don't have the trucks to staff. So, those are the big things that I see coming down the road, and hopefully, you know, we can start working on some of those and moving forward.
Good. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you for being here. What is a fire service innovation that you would like to bring to the department?
Let's see. I guess I would like to see regionalization. That would be my big one here. I think this area is primed for it. Everybody's in this, basically, the same boat. Obviously, some departments are better than others as far as staffing-wise. I think it'll allow us to pool our resources, pool our stations, pool our personnel, and I think everybody will benefit from it as a whole because we'll be all training to the same level. We'll all be getting familiar with everybody's equipment. You know, if I'm in your town, I can go to your town and go on a call in your town if I'm there, or vice versa. I think it's just a plus, plus for everybody involved, you know. The big thing is, you know, I've talked with a lot of chiefs in the area. Some are on the board, some are not, because they don't want to give up their kingdom. You're not giving up your kingdom. You're still going to maintain your piece of the kingdom. It's just going to be a collaborative effort of all the towns together. Is there someone that has to be appointed in charge? Yes, you have to. You have to have a point of contact, you know, for overall, the collaborative of departments. So, there is going to be someone in charge. However that's designed or voted on, that's somewhere down the road. But, yeah, I think regionalization is the way to go.
Can I just ask one quick follow-up? When you say "down the road," do you mean years, months, decades?
I would probably say within three years.
Within three years? If you were the chief, could you feel that you could lead such an effort?
Like I said, I know all the chiefs in the area. I know the chiefs that border. I know all the chiefs that are, you know, in those departments, you know, through the Fire Academy. I met them or during, you know, calls in the area. So, I probably could, you know. It might be someone else that's better, you know, not logistically, but more administratively. But operationally, yeah, I could lead that part of it.
Thank you so much.
Also?
No, no, I think... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm behind the fucking handle. Go ahead, Maureen.
How do you communicate with, involve, and motivate your staff and preserve the command structure of the organization?
How would I, or how do I?
How do you communicate?
Communicate, I'm an open communicator. As far as, for the command staff, I'm not part of the command staff. I'm just a firefighter, so I'm not in charge, so to speak, as far as if we go to a call on the senior person, then I would be. But command-wise, you know, through the, a chief's position would be an open-door policy. It would be, you know, I know everybody that's underneath me, you know, we have a good rapport. It's one of the reasons I've come here, one of the reasons I've stayed here. I mean, I don't live in town. I only live a couple towns away, but, you know, I come here because I like the town. I like the people. I like the people I work with. I like the person I worked for. So, I would just continue to do the same thing I'm doing as far as open and honest and, you know, and give them... I'm a straight shooter. I don't sugarcoat it. I don't, I don't come from the back. I come from the front, you know. So, if there's a problem, we can work at it. Hopefully, we can. If we can't, unfortunately, when I was Station Captain at my other job, sometimes I had to make the hard decisions. People didn't like it. They respected it, and that was it. There was no after that.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Chief.
How would you communicate with residents of the town of Barry and become involved in our community?
I'd like to see, you know, maybe like a coffee or, you know, open office hours, like, maybe like some boards have sometimes in other towns. I don't know if they have it here. But have like a, you know, once a month, or maybe a quarter, whatever works better for everybody. Have an open-door policy. Have the station open, or come to the town hall, or Senior Center, or wherever it's convenient or more accessible for the population, to be able to come in and sit down and talk and give me your concerns, and, you know, obviously, we can prioritize them. Then I can bring them up to our staff at the department, and then we can bring them up to the town and see where they follow into the master plan of the town, you know, either with PD at calls or other organizations, like the highway, or whoever else is involved, you know, and try to make it so it's more of a unified effort instead of one person, you know, leading the charge type of thing.
So, how do you work collaboratively to enhance the level of diversity and acceptance of diversity within the very... How would you, it should be, within the Barry Fire Department?
I believe the best person for the job. There is, there is no he, she, or however we identify. It's the best person for the job. If they're qualified and the best person for the job, that should be hired. There shouldn't be no, we have to hire, you know, X, or Y, or Z, or this many of these and this many of those. It should be just best person for the job, whoever that may be.
You wouldn't seek opportunities to make the department more diverse?
Honestly, I think I would be more driven towards allowing, making sure they know if you're the best person for the job, you're going to get the job. I don't know how we... I'm not a person that believes that you should hire someone because you need a certain authenticity or orientation or whatever. I don't think that's...
No, I was more concerned that you, for example, would just, even if the person had the greatest qualities, maybe you would pass them over. Wouldn't, you know, you see where I'm coming from?
Right. So, you're saying if someone was more than qualified, would I pass them over? I guess it would have to be based upon an interview process, you know, kind of like this, a set number of questions and scoring them, you know. Ultimately, as a strong chief, it'd be up to me, the hiring and firing part of it. But I would include all the officers in the department, on the board, or at least a select, you know, number of officers, and even a firefighter or two, so they all have an input of the person that's becoming a part of the department. So, if it was, if we had to pass over someone that was more qualified than the next because of based upon the questions, then yes, I would.
I just have a quick follow-up on that. Does your, I know that you said that the station is dated, and that's putting it mildly.
I think deployed.
Does that affect, or would that affect, your ability to hire a diverse, more diverse pool? Like, are there, is there a certain number of females that you can accommodate due to lack of space?
No, there isn't. Honestly...
There's no differentiation right now?
Correct. We have one bathroom for, at any given time, we have up to six people working. One bathroom, the females have no place to change except a makeshift bunk room that we had, or they go down to the Public Safety Building where, you know, they had that bathroom down there that they use down there. So, I think that draws back, definitely, if someone comes there for an interview or just to come check us out, you know, and they see that. I mean, I mean, if you go down there and look, we're backing trucks up with half inches on each side. I mean, we're constantly taking stuff off of trucks, and honestly, it's not fair coming back from a call. I mean, we're beat. We're gassed. And now we have to over-concentrate at two, three o'clock in the morning, backing a truck up with half an inch on each side? It's tough, you know, and it's unfortunate. I mean, those trucks are beat up a lot because of just that. You know, I'd like to say they're beat up because they're being used and going to calls, which they are as well, but back into the station, they shouldn't have that problem of being so close, and I get it. It's a big pill to swallow for a Public Safety Building or just a fire station alone. You know, like I said, that's why we have to have a comprehensive plan to have an idea somewhere in the near future, at least getting the ball rolling.
Is it mine?
Yep.
Okay. I keep interjecting, so I forget where I am. What are the, what are the differences between your most recent position and the position of Fire Chief in the town of Barry? And how would you approach the transition?
Well, I had a couple details into the shift supervisor at where I worked. I mean, I was a Station Captain, but I was also as Acting Assistant Chief for numerous times. So, transitioning here would be not much more of a transition, other than being more of a combination department, where I came from a full-time department. So, the differences there are, you know, you have call people that aren't there 24/7. You have a couple that are there, you know, 24/7, off and on. So, it's trying to get the call people to come in, you know, and be more involved, because right now, like I mentioned, A, we're down maybe to 12 people active out of 30, and to try to get them to want to come in and do more, you know, with the town. I get it. Everybody's time is valuable, and a lot of people work out of town now, further and further away. So, by the time they get into town, I think that's the last thing they want to do is come in here. So, we'd have to come up with maybe a better training schedule as far as where we could do it. Again, trying to entice people, either working with the town and maybe getting some tax incentives, either being excise or property or something along those lines. You know, I know some towns in the Commonwealth do that. Some people, some towns pay for health insurance based upon the number of hours you work in a year. That's another possibility. Some towns have a small retirement that they do in other towns. So, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities that we can use to entice more people. I just don't think we take advantage of some of those, that's all.
Thank you.
What are the three principles that you will use to guide you as the Fire Chief in Barry, and why do these principles stand out to you?
Like I mentioned, integrity. I mean, kind of like Rob. Rob would never ask you to do something that he wouldn't have done himself. So, I'd like to follow on that. Honest up front. I mean, I'll tell you, you ask me a question, I'll give you an answer, you know. Again, you won't see me coming from behind you. I'll be from the front, honest and open, you know, and then just be, you know, a worker. I'm not going to be a chief that sits at the top and not do anything below. Where I worked, it was, they were a firm belief, you should be able to do any job below you and up, so, before you can get to that job. So, I think those are the three things.
And so, why are they important to you, or why do they stand out?
Because I think it sends a message that, you know, you're willing to do anything that you're asking the people below you or with you to do. So, I think they tend to follow you a lot better. It's one of the reasons a lot of people, you know, followed the previous chief. He was always right there with you, no matter what, doing exactly what he asked you to do, sometimes in your way, because he wanted to do it. You had to tell him to get out of your way, but definitely, he was always there with you. He was never off, you know, doing something else unless he had to be.
Okay? Also?
Yep.
Based on your experience, explain how you would organize a response to a multiple alarm fire in your community.
It would depend on the call. Again, we've had multiple ones quite often. We've had to split the crews up and go different directions. Really, it depends on what calls comes in first, obviously. You can't necessarily deviate most times from the first call to go to the second call. I mean, if you have like a stubbed toe versus someone in cardiac arrest, that kind of dictates a little more response the other way, whereas a fire, you know, you might not, again, during the day, we're struggling to get people, so you automatically might have to go right to automatic mutual aid, getting other towns in. So, I guess it would depend on what type of calls they were and what was involved as far as, you know, life. Life is first. We try to save lives first. Property, second. So, it would all depend on the type of calls.
I think a clarifying question. I think the question was a response to a multiple alarm fire.
Oh, multiple alarm fire?
Yeah, not multiple calls.
Oh, sorry. Multiple alarm fire, I mean, is it in town or is it out of town? In town?
In the community.
Okay. So, in the community, just start right from the beginning, you know. As we get there, size it up, determine what we're going to need, determine what's coming initially, based upon our run cards. Our first alarm is just us. Then we go to a working fire, and then we have the other towns starting to come in. Anything confirms smoke or fire, it's automatic anyways on the first alarm. The towns are already going to start coming from other areas. So, and then you're going to run the ICS system, you know. We have an incident commander, which would be me or whoever the senior person is first. And then get into the operations, then you get into the whole different branches, you know, event group, search group. So, it branches off into all kinds of different areas, you know. Spada controls, you know, MAX is seven, obviously, IDEAL's five. So, you want to be able to be able to control that, so you want to try to keep it in that arena, if you can, you know, and just continue to, if it continues to grow, you know, continue to use that ICS system. That's what it's designed for, for those multiple alarm fires, big incidences, to be able to draw people in and utilize different people for different positions.
The town would be facing the need to reduce budgets and reallocate finances. What would be your approach to increase on-call participation and control and reduce the fiscal needs of the department?
You'd have to pay more. I'll do some of the lowest paid in the area as far as, you know, call. Bottom line is, you know, it's money. They say it's not about the money. These days, it is, because everything's so expensive. Everybody's working two, three jobs just to get by. So, you know, there is still service involved in there, obviously, because we wouldn't be here. You know, our clothes get ruined, we miss things. We don't get reimbursed for that stuff. So, the pay, based upon what it is now, is some of the lowest in the area, if not the lowest. And unfortunately, I don't expect people to get rich. I just expect to kind of be in the running, you know, in the middle. We don't have to be at the top. We just don't want to be at the bottom. We've got to be somewhere, you know, palatable for more people. We've got a lot of young people working here, you know, one left, you know, for other reasons, but, you know, he and I talked about it, but, you know, money was a factor, because, you know, he has a small family, two kids, a wife. You know, he wanted to buy a house, you know, a couple other people are in that boat right now, and, you know, they need to be able to survive. So, it brings, comes back to the call side you're mentioning. You've got to want to bring those people in as well. Again, go back to those tax breaks, maybe, you know, bringing those people around, something like that, a retirement, insurance. I get it, all costs money, and I know we're strapped. I know the town's strapped, and unfortunately, it might not be overnight, but we've got to have a plan to get somewhere at some point, or nothing's ever going to change.
Do you think that there's any, do you think there's any way we could leverage our relationship with UMass, having the UMass Health Center in town, towards some of the costs for our ambulance? Because I know we go on two or three, basically, taxi rides a day for UMass.
I won't say who I talk to, but I talked to someone higher up over there, and I actually had an idea, because where I grew up in Maine, they have an urgent care clinic in the town, and they actually did the same thing you're mentioning. You know, they're, they're basically housing the ambulances. They have quarters for the people there. The only problem is, is that we're going to have to have an ambulance committed to them during the hours of operation, committed. It can't be, you know, carrying whoever, you know, because of a boo-boo belly, somewhere, you know, on the backside of town. That ambulance is there for them, for their hours of operation. But I have mentioned that to this person, and they were very interested in it. Obviously, it's a lot of logistics, a lot of legal, and it was just off the cuff, because, like I said, the town I grew up in in Maine, they did that, and it works phenomenal. And they actually have a good rapport with them, with the hospital, and, you know, it's definitely something we should look at, absolutely, you know, based upon our needs here, because the calls are just going up and up. You know, last year, we were up another almost 200 from the previous year. That was 200, you know, and right now, we're missing calls. That's our revenue. That's what's paying for our staff, and we don't have those because both our ambulances are out. Gardner's Ambulances is on borrowed time.
Yeah.
I mean, it's an old truck. It's treating us good. We're very lucky for them to give it to us, you know, but it's, you know, it's on its later end of life. You know, we're taking as good care of it as we can, but we're doing, you know, eight, 10 calls a day, 50 miles round trip to the city. It takes a toll on it, you know, and these roads, as you know, some of the roads in town, as well as going into the city, they're terrible, and that truck is taking a beating, you know, and what's it going to do when that breaks? What are we going to do then? Because our ambulance is still out, and there's no date for it to come back. So, we're kind of, we're kind of at the whim of this ambulance we've got now. But I like that idea, and I think whoever gets the job definitely...
So, there's two ambulances, one of which was in the accident, which I think they're still trying to decide, are they totaling it, or are they going to maintain it, fix it?
I thought they totaled it. They're going to do a remount.
Oh, well, that would be a good thing, because last I talked with the chief, I think it was last week, he told me that we're still going back and forth. And then the other one, the new one, has some sort of an issue that is...
Braking slash steering.
Yeah, and that's something that's under warranty, and they haven't been able to fix it yet.
Right. Versus the ambulance company versus international, they're arguing back and forth.
Well, it's always helpful.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
How would you build relationships and collaborate with other Barry department heads?
Well, I pretty much know them all now as it is. You know, I see my calls, you know. I mean, the new ones coming in, haven't had a chance to meet everybody yet, but the ones that I do know, I mean, we have a great rapport with the police, you know. As far as like the highway, the new, a couple of new guys that I have, we've had pretty good rapport when we call in it. You know, again, I invite them in. I'd go down to their workstations and introduce myself, you know, ask them if there's any problems with the fire department that they see, and, you know, write them down and see what you can do to fix them, you know, and continue to do the same thing we've done for years, all work together when we need to.
Within the first hundred days as Fire Chief, it sounds like the president's thing, what are the three projects that you would collaborate with your staff to bring positive change to the department? This is a tough question. What are the three, give us three, that you would collaborate with your staff to bring positive change to the department? And why are these your top three?
Well, again, I'd start with pay. I would ask them what they think they should be making, you know, because they're aware of what the other towns make. It's not a secret. I'd ask them for a list of five things that they see wrong, that they would like changed in the department, and then I would have to probably say, how would you, I mean, I want to turn it around on them. How would they, in my position, what would they want to be able to do as a chief? I guess I would go with the other list, but still, give them an idea of what they would want to do.
Okay, so you'd seek input from your department. One of the first things is pay. What do you think would be on their list if you're seeking input from them? What do you think? What are they, what are people concerned about, complain about?
The station.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, I hate to be kicking the same, you know, doggone, so to speak, you know, but...
Not at all.
It is what it is.
Yes, it is.
You know. Pay, again, and then I would say probably, maybe equipment still. I mean, it's getting there. But, yeah, definitely, equipment, both being, not necessarily trucks, but more of what's on the trucks, what they, you know, have wanted in the past, and they haven't been able to get due to budget constraints, you know, so I would ask them those.
Okay. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry. I keep asking questions, so I never know when it's my turn. Describe a difficult situation where you were involved in disciplining an employee, and why was this a difficult situation?
I guess I would go right back to when I was, worked in the full-time department. I had to discipline a gentleman that was on my work group. So, we had seven groups, seven assigned per group, roughly, six or seven, and I consider him a friend. Unfortunately, he decided he needed to verbalize his concerns in an open meet, open forum in front of a lot of people that didn't need to hear what he had to say. And unfortunately, I brought him in, and I said, "Listen, you're a great guy. You're a great worker, you know. I understand this might have been just a slip of the tongue, so to speak, but at the time, it just wasn't the place or time." Unfortunately, I ended up writing him up. And, you know, he signed it. And, you know, he signed it, he agreed, you know, and he appreciated what I had to say, as far as how I did it. You know, I didn't do it out there. You know, I came to him later and asked him to come to the office. I didn't do it right then and there, you know, to make a bigger scene, so I brought it, kind of brought him in after the fact and sat him down.
Did you feel that it was successful?
I did, I did. Even, like, if he thanked me, and, you know, we shook hands going out the door, it seemed like it was successful, you know, and he signed it. So, I mean, usually my, as, when I was in the military, people refuse to sign things, you know, they tend not to agree with it. So if they sign it, I tend to agree that they agree with it, unless they were told to sign it, even though they don't have to. I mean, even though they have to, but they're, it's not admitting any guilt. This was nothing said of that.
Thank you.
Describe your leadership style and reference a leader that contributed to shaping your career.
I like to say Rob. I mean, Rob was a great leader. You know, again, he never did anything that he wouldn't, never asked you to do anything that he wouldn't be there doing with you. So I like that, I like leading from the front. I don't want to lead from the back. I want to be right there, making things happen with the people that you've asked to do those things, if you can. Obviously, you won't always necessarily be able to do that, but we have a lot of great people that are still here, that are kind of on the, I guess, on the tilting point of staying or going, and this is going to be a huge turning point for the department, whether anybody believes it or not. It's going to be very, hopefully not detrimental, but it's going to be a defining moment in this department's history, whoever gets the job.
Could you just, I'll forget what we're, that I'm not asking you a question, it's on the sheet, but, just a follow-up. You talk about that leader that made, you know, a difference in your career and so forth, and it was the current sheet. You're one of three applicants who's an in-house candidate. Tell me, or fantasize for me, whoever is the, is the, is the person who's chosen, you have two people who could be disgruntled. Tell me, if you are the successful candidate, what would you do to, you know, smooth the waters before, you know, you entered the ring to take over the department?
We've already talked about it amongst ourselves.
Oh, okay.
As far as, you know, just wishing each other good luck. I think I'm good enough friends with both of them that I don't think it'd be an issue. If it was, I'd bring them both in, and, you know, one at a time or together, and say, you know, "I hope this ain't going to be a problem, but, you know, what can we do to kind of, you know, make it tolerable?" Ideally, everybody wants the position, because they're here. So, everybody can't get the position. So obviously, some of the people aren't going to get it, and that's unfortunate, but at the same time, you know, I would just be more kind of respectful and bring them in and just talk to them and see where they're at in their career. Whether, I've already been approached by some people in the department that said if I get the job, they're leaving. I told them, I said, "That's unfortunate, but you're going to do what's best for you and your family. I can't make you stay if you don't want to, and I wouldn't want you if you don't want to be here and be productive." So, I mean, I don't want to see anybody leave, not only the fact that we can't afford anybody to leave, because it would be terrible. The people that said this to me, you know, I hope they don't leave, because they're good people. They just need, I think, a little more structure in the organization, you know. So, am I that person? I don't know.
Define, define a little more structure.
Like a schedule of events. Like, a full-time department where I was, we had a schedule every day. We had a schedule, seven to eight was truck checkout, eight to eight-thirty was lunch, eight-thirty to nine fifteen-ish was details, nine fifteen to eleven was training, eleven to one was lunch, one to three was training again, or any other details we needed to do, or self-study. Three to four was exercise time, and after four was your own time. So, I mean, and then truck riding assignments. We don't have truck riding assignments. Sometimes that's challenging for us, because if six of us are working, we're asking each other, "What are you doing? Well, what are you doing? What are you doing?" That's should-and-how beat. We should have positions predetermined, the best we can, obviously, because ambulance goes out, takes two people off an engine, or whatever, wherever they're assigned. So that's going to be the flexible part. But at least you have a place to start, you know, and have your gear in place, so you can get on the truck quicker and get out the door. You know, we don't necessarily do that here, which, you know, that's the way they decided to leave it. That was, you know, approved over my head, which was fine. I go by what my leader tells me to do, as long as it doesn't kill me or hurt me. You know, you've got to follow. I mean, a chief can speak, it's a military, paramilitary organization.
Why is this position the best match for you personally, and how will you balance the often competing needs of the Berry Fire Department and your family?
Well, I'm divorced, my daughter doesn't live with me, so, pretty single. So time is not a big concern for me. Best job, I mean, I think it's moving up. Like I said, I've been detailed many times to positions. Been very fortunate to have given chances for those. So I think this is just a normal progression as far as my career, you know, moving upwise. So, I would like the opportunity to do it. So, I just think I've done my time. I've, not to say I can't learn more going into it, but I think I'm ready for that next position.
Actually, I have one more that I'll put in for everyone. Could you just share with us any experience you have with budgeting or with grant pursuits?
I was a, one of the coordinators at the State Fire Academy. I recently just resigned for about almost seven and a half years. So, I was responsible for approximately $1 million in assets, scheduling about 100 different instructors on, you know, probably eight to 10, maybe even 12 classes, you know, held out throughout the year. So, budgeting-wise, I obviously had to watch my budget, scheduling, getting, buying equipment, you know, knowing when they took money back, and how to move the stuff around and stuff like that. So, my last budget as, before I resigned, was just about a quarter million dollars. And as far as grants, I have assisted with grants, I have not ever written a grant, but I was involved with the grants for a couple of the state fire props that we have.
Could you give me an example of something in your career that you feel you absolutely failed at, and how you responded to that, and how you decided to move on? Sometimes we just like to forget those things.
I think you just forget them because you don't want to relive them, I guess, I don't know. Jeez. I guess, one time I forgot my, like, a helmet, you know, or, yeah, I forgot my helmet and mask. Somehow it wasn't where I left it, and I took for granted that it was still there, and it fell out of the compartment when someone else went in there, and it fell off the truck. I thought it was in there. So now I, well, before I retired, I always had it at my door. Coat hanging on the door, helmet on the dash, mask on the doghouse. So I never had that, that problem again. It was pretty embarrassing when you get there, and you had to borrow the driver's helmet that doesn't fit, a mask that barely fit, you know, so everybody knew what you did, you know, because they can see it. So, so it was a pretty, pretty easy fix. It was just kind of an embarrassing situation.
Thank you. You are, we're done with our questions. However, we would like to give you the opportunity, if you have questions of the select board, or would like to make another comment, or about any specific aspect of your skill and talent that you think we should know about?
No, I just, I hope, you know, I mean, I don't live in a town, I can only go by what I hear, and what I see when I'm working, you know, or I see on the, on the, on the video meetings.
Oh, God, you watch those meetings?
Oh, I do. Absolutely, I do. Yep. So, I would hope with whatever political climate there is, that everybody can kind of step above that, moving forward, and hopefully work together, because it's not going to get better. It's going the wrong way. We're in reverse. At least put it in neutral, and, you know, let things fill in, let things level, you know, and then try to go forward, you know. Maybe put it in L1, you know, low gear, and just start crawling first. But we've got to do something to start going in the opposite direction, because we don't want to be in the direction that we're in, both as a town and as well as the department we're in right now. Because, I say this all the time, no one cares what it says on the side of that truck, fire truck or ambulance, you know, when it pulls up. They just want someone to show up. And time and time again, I'm hearing, the calls aren't being staffed, they're not, you know, the ambulance is out of town already, so they've got to get mutual aid, and a lot of times, the other towns are out too, or they're not staffed. You know, Hubbard's is having trouble staffing sometimes, you know, after hours, you know. It's just the nature of the beast, it's not anything personal with anybody. So we've got to really work together and try to figure this out as a collaborative with, not so much just Berry, but everybody around us, because everybody's in the same boat, you know, excluding maybe, you know, rather than because they've got more people on duty full-time, but the other towns going this way, you know, they are in that boat, and hopefully we can come up with a plan to kind of unify that.
Any other questions for us, or comments that we feel will be useful? This is your chance.
Thanks for having me.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Nice to see you in this atmosphere, Jason. Very impressive.
Thank you. Ah, that's all right.
Well, I guess we've got, we've got a little time in between candidates, so the ladies' room is out front there. I don't know if Sandy has some water upstairs or anything? If not, it's okay. We've started across the hall there. Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming, Tom. Okay, we're just getting back on TV. You're not really on TV tonight. We don't want anybody to steal your good answers. Don't want anybody to steal your good answers.
Okay, we're back on.
Okay, we're back on. Welcoming Tom George tonight, another one of our final candidates for the position of Fire Chief in the town of Barry. We will be giving a round of questions and provide, you know, he'll provide us with answers. We may ask some follow-up questions as we go through, and obviously if you have concerns about, I don't understand the question, don't hesitate to say or ask us to clarify. John?
Sure. Hello, Sarah Self. Thanks for coming tonight. What have you done to prepare for the position of Fire Chief in the town of Barry, and what differentiates you from other candidates?
Stress, worry, all of the above. I've kind of looked at the department overall. I've kind of got an idea of what our budget is, what kind of, a little bit of the area departments are doing, just the climate of where we stand as a department. Looked at our run calls, looked at our staffing levels, which our run numbers keep going up, our staffing levels keep going down, our facilities are declining. Luckily, we're getting back on track with our apparatus and equipment, but it's a challenge going forward.
So what have you done to sort of, beside look at some of that data, to, you know, what have you done to prepare? Have you gotten additional data? What are the things?
I think of just going, I think of just kind of going on, I don't think I've done anything special compared for it. I'm pretty much going on what I know, as a firefighter of 35 years, my experience within the department, the number of years I've been with the town, my knowledge of all of that. Shy of actually going to additional training or anything like that.
Would you, if you were the successful candidate, would you be amenable to participating in a chief's preparation course that's offered for new chiefs?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's actually part of becoming a fire chief is attending the Fire Academy, the officer courses, the fire chief courses, things along those lines. It's definitely, I feel is definitely required.
Okay, this is my question now. What challenges do you see facing the Barry Fire Department and the town in the upcoming year?
I think to a certain degree, I just touched a little bit upon that. The biggest thing is staffing. We've tried to do enrollment campaigns, trying to get additional manpower onto the department. We just don't see an influx of individuals getting onto the fire departments anymore. We used to be a strong call department. We don't have that call, that call resource anymore. It's kind of a catch-22, is if you rely on your call and you don't have that call, you've got to put somebody in place to take the call. So you've got to start at full-time. At full-time, you're not going to have too much call. So it just kind of cycles, and eventually you've got to staff it somehow.
Do you have any suggestions on what to do in order to increase the individuals who would like to participate in an on-call situation? Because you're the chief, you're going to have to figure it out. What's your plan?
I think continue with the way we have been. As a current officer, we've been kind of doing some outreach programs, getting into the schools, trying to show them what we're about, and continue on that, in that direction to try and bring in additional people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for joining us. What is the fire service innovation that you would like to bring to the fire department?
I think if we look to technology that's up and coming, you start looking at online training, you look at virtual realities, starting to become a bigger thing now. Those could be useful tools to enhance our training abilities. You can put somebody into a virtual reality system for driver training, or any type of scenario that, you know, you may not have the manpower to do like a live fire, but you can put them into a virtual reality simulation, put them into a virtual reality driver training program before you actually put them into a vehicle and, you know, and get them to the road. So that could be something that's, that could be brought into the department. How do you communicate with, involve, and motivate your staff and preserve the command structure within the organization? Depending on the type of communication, if it's, ideally it's disseminating, disseminating down through the ranks. So as the chief, it's disseminating to the other assistant chiefs and captains to disseminate whatever information beyond that. Or I think you need to be a little bit flexible with it, is you can communicate with the staff, one-on-one or as a group. If it needs to be a little bit more, it's along the lines of discipline or anything like that, or implementing things is using your, using your command staff to implement things.
Let me just ask a follow-up there. Taco is, it asks here, and still preserve the command structure with the organization. You're an in-house candidate, you're one of the troops. So how would you initiate the idea that you are now at the top of the command structure? You're not just Tom, but you're in charge, without, you know, maybe making people run away and say, "I can't believe you, he's so changed, he's crazy." What would you do to make that adjustment?
I think I would have a group meeting, and basically just explain to everybody, hey, this is, you know, this is the change that we've gone, kind of set up my ambitions, my expectations, and accept answers from the membership as to what they see going forward, and try to take any concerns that they may have.
Could you just talk to me and say, what would be your expectation? If you were talking to me right now, because I was one of the people that you were going to be, you know, in your organization, what would be your expectations for me to be a competent fire guy?
My expectation would be to attend the calls as best you can, make every effort to attend all the training. If you're a call individual, we can't expect you to attend every training session. You know, life happens, people have their own families and whatnot.
Thank you. It's not me, it's, yeah. You or me? It's John. John, it's you. No, that's you. We're all on. Just jump in when everybody's quiet.
Evening, Tom. Thanks for being here. How would you communicate with residents of the town of Barry and become involved in our community?
I think the chief currently has done a pretty good job of that, whether it's on social media or emails or some of his outreach programs. I think I would just continue on with that, with that program. I don't think people are really referring more to a website as much, maintain a, maintain a website that has a little bit more information, and be strong on the social media and media whatnot. Our outreach programs, onto the schools, I think is an excellent, an excellent way to get in touch with the kids, which then ultimately they'll go back to their parents and...
When you say get in touch with the students, what do you mean?
Currently, we have programs in the schools, but fire prevention programs, state programs, stuff like that, that are out there that teach the kids in the schools, stop, drop, and roll, and fire prevention, that type of stuff. And I believe it's currently working effectively.
Is there any sort of, like, junior firefighter program or anything like that?
Yeah.
And how old, is there an age requirement to become a fully certified firefighter?
Fully certified would be minimum eighteen. Junior firefighters are sixteen, sixteen and seventeen.
Do we have any junior firefighters in the community? I maybe don't know.
I don't believe we do right now, no.
Or do we have any, those would be the sixteen-year-olds, so no eighteen-year-olds or sixteen-year-olds at this point?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I think we've got one intern at this point.
Okay. An intern who's, so there was a program for interns?
Yes, the chief, I believe the chief has set up an intern program, that we have one intern right now that's...
How do you work collaboratively to enhance the level of diversity and acceptance of diversity within the Barry Fire Department? Or how would you work collaboratively?
I think we already have diversity in the department. I don't think there's any, I think we just continue on with that, with what we have, is as long as somebody wants to join the department, they're willing to, they're able to pass the training requirements, pass the medical requirements, go to the, go to training and show up to the calls and the trainings, then they're welcome. They're...
Do you feel that your current headquarters facility limits your ability to attract, say, female employees? Or do you have enough, do you have services at your facility, bathroom, changing showers, for females?
Do we have enough? No. Can be better? Absolutely. I don't think it's deterred us from, you know, recruiting women, women employees at all. You know, we currently have some at this, at this point, but I think we can, as far as facilities, we can do better. Absolutely.
Is it me?
Yes, you.
Okay. What are the differences between your recent position and the position of Fire Chief in the town of Barry? How would you approach that transition?
The differences between the two?
I know, it's kind of a crazy question for you, but, okay.
The difference between the two is, one way of looking at it is, when I first started the position I'm in, I first saw it as a position of zero. So to a certain degree, somebody would look at those two positions and say, zero over here. Fire chief, you know, as well as the police chief, they're both high priority, high visible positions within the town. As far as the transition, I think it would be working with, if Scott were to come up into my, into my position as the chief operator of the sewer, is work with him at the same time, do a transition with the fire chief here, do a transition with Scott at the wastewater facility, make sure that Scott's all set, he's able to successfully take over there, to be as seamless as possible.
How would you approach, you know that there are in-house candidates, you're one of those, how would you approach, if you were the successful candidate, how do you approach the individuals who aren't the successful candidate and make things work?
Very half.
Okay.
Prior to us getting to this point, we've talked to each other, we've discussed it, regardless if one of us were to get the position. We all agree that we'll continue to work with each other and keep moving forward. And even after, after the point, it's exactly the same thing, have the conversation again and say, hey, are there any hard feelings, is there, can we, can we keep going?
Thank you.
What are the three principles that you would use to guide you as a fire chief in Barry?
I think it'd be the same that I have right now, loyalty, integrity, and trust. I think I've, what's the position I have now, and I think a lot of you have seen the facilities that I work in, that I run a pretty good ship. I think I've built the trust and the loyalty of the people I work with, the people of the town, and I think I would just continue on with that method.
Why are these principles important to you? Why do they stand out?
Because they are core values to me.
One more follow-up question. When you say loyalty, many times you get torn between loyalty to your department members versus loyalty to the town or your bosses. How would, how would you handle it when there's, you have to choose?
Good question. I think what it comes down to it is you represent the town, you represent the people of the town of Barry. Depending on the, on the situation, you know, you have to stand by, you have to stand by the town and help to, help that employee understand, is to, you know, how would I word it? Help that employee to understand your standing or your position.
Just to fall off on that, what's your obligation to the leaders, town leadership, in telling them the truth, even if they don't want to hear it?
I think it's important.
Possible?
Is it possible? Yeah.
Is it necessary?
Necessary, yeah. Absolutely.
Just making sure.
Yeah. Third, people have to know the truth, and they, regardless of how hard that truth is, decisions have to be made. And if they're not being made on the, on the truth, then the false decision's going to be made. It can be detrimental.
What's the scariest thing that ever happened to you when responding to something in the fire department?
The scariest?
Who's difficult?
Pick one.
Pick one?
The scariest or the most difficult?
Most difficult.
The most difficult is the Brittany March accident, still to this day.
Yeah, okay. I got you. I got you. Okay.
Based on your experience, explain how you'd organize the response to multiple alarm fire, or in our community, you know, of one event.
Repeat it one more time.
Based on your experience, though, would you organize the response to a multiple alarm fire in your community?
It would be setting up on scene, setting up a command, assessing the situation, and setting up the divisions and incident command sections that are required. Keeping track of accountability, assigning other officers and chiefs from other departments certain roles to maintain accountability, maintain safety, and just maintain, maintain the scene at that point, just directing the, directing the crews as they commit to whatever it is that, yes, it may be, and what is needed.
Could I ask, what's the, sort of, the largest multiple fire alarm that you, we've had in the community that you've served to?
Community?
Or an adjacent community?
I think the largest in an adjacent community would be Princeton a few years ago. It's the, the old, it's the old hotel on the hill. We were called into, they had fire departments as far as like Pittsburgh, Leominster, and all the local areas around here. I'm thinking that, I guess the multiple alarm we've had, we've had a few around here. I think the, I think the biggest would have to be the Tiff Oliver Square Fire.
Oh, down where the woman was lost in the fire?
Yeah, quite a few people there.
That was an old wooden house, right?
Yeah, it was a, I think that was a two-family.
The town may be facing the need to reduce budgets and reallocate finances. What would be your approach to increase on-call participation and control and reduce the fiscal needs of the department?
That's a tough one, because we're, we're at a, we're understaffed, understaffed, underpaid, but to try and make cuts. Some services may have to get cut. If you're cutting services, you need to be, you're probably cutting outreach to the public, which are, I think are very important to the public, or to department relations.
That's kind of, that's kind of a follow-up. Do you see any way to leverage our relationship with UMass, seeing as how we have a health center in town that takes up so much of our resources?
I think there's a possibility of opening up conversations and seeing what's amenable to. We have to look at, we have to look at ways on how to increase our revenue, whether it be, you know, we currently have, we provide services to other departments, or other towns for an ambulance service, and it's kind of a catch-22. If you're going there, we're going to go there anyway, why are we not getting paid for it? We should be getting paid for it. We're not, chances are, as a mutual aid, we're going to have to go. So we should be charging for those services. It's very similar to how you guys at the police department go to the Barry Falls Dam. You do checks there, you're getting money to be able to do that. You know, we may have to look at regionalization as an option.
Talk a little bit about that.
Regionalization? Regionalization, I think in the beginning, wouldn't be, wouldn't be very much of a cost savings, but I think over time, it would be...
How would you, if you were the chief, how would you initiate any conversations about visualization?
Talking to area chiefs, finding out, you know, what they're, if they're amenable to it, what their expectations are of it. Obviously, if you were going to look into that, it's what's the, what's in the best interest of the town of Barry. We don't want to lose our services that we have now. We don't want to go backwards, we want to keep going forward. We want to provide the best service that we can for the town of Barry. There may be, not 100% sure on how the scheduling works now, may have to look at how the scheduling works. Adjusting the schedule as needed to what, what best works for the department, the town. Adjusting the schedule as needed to what best works for the department, the town, and provides a possible cost savings.
We've gotten kind of spoilt, perhaps, with the current chief who jumps on whatever truck, whether it's an ambulance, whether it's a truck, whether it's a brush fire, whatever, and doesn't matter if he has paperwork to do or whatever. Would you attempt to continue that kind of leadership?
Yeah, I think I pretty much do that.
All right.
As my current role, yes.
How would you build relationships and collaborate with other Bay Area department heads?
I think to a certain degree, we kind of do now, or have. I think we've got a pretty good working relationship, good open conversation going, and I think we should just keep going with it and improve it. The police department is very open to conversation, you know, we get together doing joint trainings and things like that. They work well together on the scenes. I think, you know, all departments, I think, work very well together. Just keep that communication going.
How would you build relationships, oh, sorry, very, very. Within the first 100 days as fire chief, what are the three projects that you would collaborate with your staff to bring positive change to the department? And why are these the top three?
Top three projects? Off the top of my head, I don't have any top three projects at this point. I'd have to look and see what's currently in place, what we're, I think we've got a good outreach program, we've got some good programs in place, and see what, see what they're doing, how they're doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Describe a difficult situation where you were involved in disciplining an employee.
Disciplining? I don't think I've ever had a difficult situation of disciplining an employee. Anything we've done on the fire department, I've always done, after a call, I get my crew together, we would do an after, an after incident, just a quick on-the-spot discussion. It's just a matter of talking through that incident, what'd we do? What'd we do good? What'd we do bad? And how do we make ourselves better? If there was something that didn't quite go right, what was it and how do we correct it? So I don't think there's any, there hasn't, I don't think there's been a difficult disciplining issue.
So, since that one wasn't difficult, if you have to do disciplinary action on someone where it's going to be difficult, whether it's a friend or recently promoted to chief, then it would, it might be difficult for putting in that situation of disciplining, how would you handle it?
Basically, just bring the person aside, whether it's in my office or up, you know, just set aside somewhere, depending on the situation, following the town's disciplinary guidelines, and work through it. Talk to the individual. If it's going to become difficult, then escalate the discipline according to the policies.
Describe your leadership style in reference to a leader that has contributed to shaping your career.
I think I, my leadership skills, I think, align very much with the current chief. He's very proactive. He, he can be very democratic at times, getting input from the membership and the other officers towards decisions after you may make. But if there's certain decisions, such as run cards or responses, then he takes it upon himself, kind of puts it out there, and this is what I'm thinking. I think they're kind of along the same lines. You have to be flexible as a leader. You have to do, like, some projects, you give it to the people and say, to some of the individuals, say, "This is what I want done, go do it." Let them do it. Don't micromanage them. If it doesn't come out the way you want it, then we redirect them. Sometimes we may have to just do precise, precise goals and guidelines, and let them do their, let them do what is they need to do. And it's kind of how I've run the wastewater plant. So just continue the same, the same methods that I've done so up to now.
Do you have a leader that has contributed to shaping your career?
I don't think I've had one specific. There's been many people that I've kind of taken from. I have a lot of respect, a lot of respect for Chief Gauske. His methods, how he's conducted himself within the fire department, how he's brought the department to where it is today. So.
Why is this position the best actually, personally? How will you balance the often competing needs of the Bay Area Fire Department in your community?
My wife is probably going to tell you differently. I think this is the next step in my firefighting career. I started as a volunteer firefighter in a small little town, and I've continued since then at the age of 18. Luckily became a lieutenant back in 2016 and continued to grow. I think this is kind of the next, the next step in my career. As far as balancing life and, my second life, if you will, it's just knowing when to take a break. In the fire service, you know, it's 24-hour. So it's, somebody has to answer the call. At times, we've just got to know when to take a break and...
Let me just ask another thing. Often competing needs, I suspect, since you were employed in another very important job within the community currently, that as you would transition, if you're the successful candidate, to another very important job within the community, I would suspect there would be some folks who would be dragging you back to your previous job in order to get direction and leadership, and how would you handle that and how would you balance that?
We'd just have to set guidelines. I think the only, the only one that would probably be pulling me would probably be Scott. And that's just to get him, I think I've got him up to speed on everything. He's very competent. I give him a lot of room to be able to do a lot of the work down there. He can do my position. It's just a matter of the administration type skills. Once he catches that, then he has no problem. It's just a matter of setting some time aside, you know, whether it's a couple hours in the weekend or the, you know, week evenings, or during the day or whatever. It's just a matter of setting some time aside to train him and get him up to speed. But as time goes on, it's going to be, you guys are all set, continue on.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, we have two of us. Could you share with us any experience with budgeting and grant pursuits?
With budgeting, obviously with the wastewater facility, I'm quite first on that budget. I'm currently overseeing the four-and-a-half million dollar upgrade that's going on down there. Trying to maintain the budget and whatnot for that. I'm quite first on that part. What was the second?
Grant writing or grants?
Yep, so I've written the Maya grant for quite a few years, obtaining equipment, PPE for DPW. And I think a couple of years ago, I wrote, I've been getting into writing firefighter grants. Most notable one that I wrote was for the Berry Foundation, which got us the forcible entry door for the fire department. I've written a few grants, so.
Tell us a time when you failed at something, and how you handled it and what you learned from it.
I failed quite a few. I don't think there's any one, any one time that I can point out. I don't take failure very well. I stew on it, I mull it over. It eats me up for a while, and then eventually I learn from it and move on.
How do you move on?
Just accept that it was a failure, there's nothing, you know, I learned from it, then I turn that into a, into a learning experience and chalk it up to that. Just keep going, keep moving forward. I think a lot of our, how we progress and how we learn is based on our failures.
Okay, anyone else have any follow-up questions before we ask you if you have any questions of us that you think would be useful in this interview time? Any questions? Okay, it's your turn, if you'd like to ask us any questions regarding the position or...
So, I think one of the other questions I have is, we're, we're coming into some tough times. Budgeting, like we've discussed, is employees, staffing. Where do you folks see the fire department? What is your, what is your outlook for the fire department? I think that's, that's my question to you.
My fantasies or what I think is realistic?
I think we all want a, fantasy, we all want to see a fully-staffed fire department and, but, tell me, I want to know where you guys see, what you would like to see for the fire department.
What I would like to see in the fire department? I would like to see an individual who understands the community, who respects the community, who understands that the community needs the things that I'm responsible for delivering, and who is determined, regardless of hassle, to make those things happen. Not to say, "We'll never get a decent facility. I'll never get a good place for them to work." Because, gosh, that would, that would be screaming to me if I were you, that it doesn't look like that will be easy. But it doesn't matter if it's easy or not easy, that would be your commitment. That I would say, "I hate to see him come again because he's going to talk about blank." I would like to see competence, obviously. I would like to see new ideas, new ways to approach old problems. Of course, I want to see everything, but, and I also want to see honesty to a point of wondering if you've insulted the board. Because if no one will tell us the truth, we can't help. I mean, we can pretend we're helping or think we're helping, but maybe we're not. I think we talked about regionalization, that's probably something in our future, and it will be a struggle, and we know that. So I guess that's what I want to see. And I would say, it's a tall order. It's a tall order to imagine that we can continue to have an ambulance service with equipment that's actually running, you know, right now, because that's just going to be frustrating for people. That we can get some on-call folks who, you know, are feeling either the compensation's worth it, or the opportunity to learn new things and do things for the community are worth it, because obviously, we're not going to be a full-time staffed Rutland. We're just not, we're not big enough, and we're not, you know, we don't have the financial room where with all. So I guess that's what I'm looking for, a truth teller, a person who, every time I see him, "Oh, Christ, he's going to talk about that new facility again." Because if nobody talks about it, if nobody pushes, we get other stuff that's on our lap that we just move forward with and we don't get it. It's like this guy with that accreditation thing. Okay? And not that I don't say, "I hope he's not going to talk about accreditation again because that's going to cost us more money." But we know that, we know what he wants. He wants this thing, this perfection, that the rest of us are going, "Ugh, he's going to talk about it again." And the only way it's going to happen is I have to keep going, "Ooh, he's going to talk about it again." You know, right? That we're going to get the new policies, and we're going to know it's going to cost a little bit more money to put fence in a specific spot, and things that seem ridiculous to us, but we know that we're moving in a direction that I think makes the town better and certainly provides opportunity for new officers, and also puts the town in a situation where we know the public safety aspect of the community is well, well-guarded, well-taken care of.
So, from my perspective, what I'd like to see is someone who can come in, who can very effectively manage personnel, and understanding what their needs are, but balancing what the town needs are as well. Finding how to help and support, you know, growth of people in the fire department, professional growth, and, but I also want someone who can come in and work together with other departments in the town and start bringing the town together, not just, you know, police, fire, and DPW, but with accounting, with the town administrator's office, people who can come in and be willing to work together even when it's uncomfortable to start, you know, get the town moving in the right direction, working collaboratively. I also really want someone who can work with us to find those grant opportunities to get that fire station built, I think. I think everyone up here wants to see, you know, some sort of, we need some facility, we need to find a way to do that. But I want to see someone who can come in, not just lead, but also follow when necessary, but bring to the board's attention and tell us when we're stupid, frankly.
Agreed, Joe.
Mark? I'd like to see a chief to help with the real needs of the community, not just inflated, you know, wants of, you know, certain individuals. I believe that, I believe that if I tighten it in, you know, bring it into what the town needs, as far as, let's go with the ambulance side. We should have an ambulance that covers the town before the taxpayers all the time. We shouldn't have two ambulances out somewhere else. So, again, the needs of the community, you know what I mean? Regardless of what is said, I mean, these taxpayers pay for these things. The staffing, obviously, adequate staffing, which, you know, you understand the problems there. That just rolls into money over time. It's just, it's a continuous, you know, snowball. It's just not the staffing, it's other things, you know? And unity with all the departments, you know, all the departments, you know, they all work together. You can't have this, these little groups that play against each other, that's all.
I think being in a small town like this with limited funding, it's important to kind of think outside the box, to kind of look for other funding sources that are available. And that may not be through traditional means, but I think it's just important to kind of come up with ideas that you can bring before this law board, and they can say, "Well, the school's never going to pay for your SRO," so. But it's important to, like Dr. Marshall said, it's important to kind of hammer those things, because that's the only way that we're really going to be able to have any sort of growth. And the other thing is just paying attention to your staff, and again, thinking outside the box, doing little things for your staff that just makes it a little bit easier, you know? Like allowing officers to wear shorts on a detail, I don't know about that still, but, you know, if it makes the guys happy, then, you know, just kind of, just little things like that, you kind of have to just think outside the box and not be, so.
Anybody else? Tammy, Kelly?
I think they nailed it perfectly, you know, definitely working with the department heads and caring about how much the budget is and knowing we have to sometimes cut the, cut, you know, budgeting, and I want you to have a fire station too. I really do. So there's things that we need to obviously work on on that end, so.
Tina? From your perspective, or even from a neighboring department?
I see one of the biggest needs is to be able to pull the department together in this change, because, you know, as a mutual aid partner...
in this change, because, you know, as a mutual aid partner, I've seen Berry as the one we all looked at to go, "How do they get all these called firefighters?" They roll out the door, every truck is full, and now I've seen it go to where they're hitting the towns twice for a structural type response or, you know? And that's a challenge. That's something that's got to be addressed, and morale of the department is hard, is a hard one.
Very much so. I agree with a lot of it, it's morale, that's a big one, morale as well. The political climate over the past while has taken its toll on the town, not just any single department, but on the town itself. I think we have to, we have to fix that, we have to fix our morale, and it's not an easy task, it's not, it's going to be hard, it's going to be good things to try.
And one person can't do it, is what you're saying.
What's that?
And one person can't do it.
It'll take a group, but I think we can do it. That's all I have.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, just to let you know, you know this will not be on TV until such time as other people have been interviewed and so forth. So we obviously are not going to take any time to discuss anything about the two candidates that were interviewed this evening. We will basically pretty much close our meeting once you leave, so we won't be chatting behind your back or anything like that. And thank those individuals or citizens who've taken the time to be here tonight, and thank you very much for helping us out. And we'd like to bring as much expertise as we could, because obviously the people who are on the select board know some stuff, but we don't know all of the stuff. And this is something that is very important to the community, and we wanted to get another perspective of someone who's, you know, not a Berryite, but who understands what's happening in the central Mass area big time.
With that, thanks folks, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And thank you so much for, for here, we would appreciate that.
Can I offer a brief little educational piece because it would be important with your discussions with your chief, where you said you want an ambulance dedicated to the town of Berry and not going elsewhere.
We have two ambulances, there's no way to keep them?
If, if a call comes in...
Yeah, well, one question, so when you have somebody on the floor in Berry and then control on the power, how does that work? This is like, I asked this question.
So, hardwood is, that's one you can control, because you have a little bit more, you have a contract with hardwood covering. So that's, that's one thing, but that brings in...
That's what I'm talking about.
Because when a call comes in, even a mutual aid, a call comes in for mutual aid for an ambulance, if we have, if you have an ambulance available, now, there is the question of what you determine is available, but if you have an ambulance available, if Rutland hits that, hits the tones, and you have a crew in the station, an ambulance there, and they don't go, there's a liability. Because in regulations, we have a responsibility to dispatch, treat, and transport, and that's in regulation, there's nothing we can do about it. The definitions are a little sketchy sometimes, but that's because...
That I realize, I actually looked into it a bit, nothing up, you know?
So the contracts are different, you know, whether you're going there and you can charge them whatever, you tell them you want, whatever you said, you can say, "Look, we need, we need another full-timer to cover going to this other town."
Yeah, this is basically my personal opinion, that's all it is. Why someone, why we would have one of our, or both our ambulances gone and we got some, you know, a taxpayer in town.
And that happens all the time, unfortunately.
I just don't feel it's right, that's all.
Because if someone in the next town, you know, is having a heart attack, unfortunately it's because of systems abuse now. More people calling the ambulance that don't need it. But it's when the life is on the line, you've got to respond to it. Now, if you have both your crews, you know, one crew's out of town, you have an ALS provider in town, and you got a call for toe pain, you know, a neighboring town, can you hold back that resource? You could say you're not available, but then it gets hairy, you've got to be careful of that. And we get, I've been working with Ethel on that, because they've had twice where they've gone mutual aid to the next town, and it was a side call or a toe pain, something like, and then they had a cardiac arrest in their town. And it's the problem with the whole system, but...
I see it, yeah, I think it's a problem.
It is, it's a big problem. But the contracts with your neighboring towns, you can, you can set the rates to say, "Look, we can't do this for this amount of money, because we have to staff the station, we have to cover our calls."
Try to make changes a lot.
Yeah, that's just, because everyone's in the same financial boat, but hey, if they're not paying for an ambulance...
Right.
They're somewhere. And if you ever need assistance working on that part of things, let me know.
We will.
Work with the service own plan.
We will, you don't know what you just did. We will.
It's just a challenge, it's such a challenge to keep an ambulance available.
But that is something we can really use her insight on.
Our community should have at least one, I mean, does one, you know, so it's different, you get two ambulances, like, you know, we should have one available, two taxpayers, seeing how...
You have to keep in mind too how far the hospitals are though.
Yes.
You're going to have more time out of town.
That's your biggest challenge.
What's that, I'm sorry?
All the hospitals are, you know, pretty significant distance, no matter which direction you go.
This is the worst community, you've heard that, you're at least half an hour from any hospital.
Yeah, exactly.
Minimum, yeah. That's going fast, a half hour to UMass.
Well, and the, you know, the fact that UMass uses us as a taxi service.
Yeah, from the clinic.
The clinic is a whole other thing, too, yeah.
And if you have any suggestions or insights about that, that would be great for us to do.
And that one's tough, because you can, you can delay a response to a place where they already have a higher level of care, if it's something that doesn't need to go emergently. But it's, that's a challenge, you know, you don't know, well, what are you waiting for? Well, for the crew that's at the hospital to clear, so that now that at least you know they're heading back. Unfortunately, the tough part is the regional dis带t, you don't have much influence, if any, over what they do. So they're, you know, they're going to do what they're going to do for tone, call like that. When they get the call, they just send it out.
Is it unheard of for a facility like UMass, I mean, they have their own ambulance service, why couldn't they park one of their ambulances?
They do, but, and they could, they could, they could contract with a private, they could most certainly contract with a private. So you could approach them about a contract if you were, but it's not technically an inter-facility transfer either, because they're not an emergency room, it's not going from ER to ER. But at the same time, nursing homes contract with providers. They used to have, Hubbardston used to cover it. When Berry was, didn't have ALS, we would cover the health center. So they can contract with somebody for that, it doesn't have to go through 911 unless it's, you know, an emergent call. But you could have that discussion with them and say, "This is taxing on us, we need to, one, have a contract, and they pay X amount extra if you have extra people on," or have a contract with a third-party provider, which they're probably going to want to pay you extra, because no one's going to park an ambulance there and staff it during their normal hours for two or three transports a day.
Two or three transports a day for us, it's one ambulance going.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot. And of course, they could have someone sitting there for no transports, because you'll go there too, and there's no transports out of there, and then they'll have a bunch.
Well, again, thank you. And you'll be here tonight with, tomorrow night with us?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. So we really have no other business this evening, so...
I'll move to adjourn?
Right, no.
Nope.
Oh, the water thing?
Yeah.
Well, just to let you know that I had another meeting with the town of Pelham regarding the thing that we had a long discussion with Mr. Andrews the other night, which is the water bill. And obviously, there's no question that we will, you know, we have been through several meetings, we will be supporting the water bill, and I just let WRR know that we are, you know, in support of that bill. Whether or not that is anything that will ever help us, it's hard to say. And the municipal water bill that they're talking about, which is just called the Water Bill, will not be even worked through the legislative process until late June into the summer. So this is just an opportunity for towns to say, "Yes, we're interested in this, and we'd like to continue to pursue conversations with the Mass Water Resource Authority." And I know that we've also completed the letter that we had talked with Mr. Wood about regarding...
Yeah, regarding access to the big roads and the water show. So we'll have that on...
Monday night.
Yeah, a few minor edits to commit that, and then we'll be able to review that Monday night at our next meeting.
And so we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second, those in favor?
Aye.
I guess we're adjourned. Again, thank you all for your help and participation this evening, appreciate it.